All the word of the Carney School to support the case. What would it just define of the United States of America and keep the Republic of America's one, efficient, ethical, responsible, liberty and justice for all?
Mary Cole here.
Brian here.
Here.
Dan Halloran.
John Curran.
Here.
Reese White sir.
Susan Mormon.
Here.
Arlene Bailey.
Here. Adopt the agenda. I move the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Post. Thank you. Public comment? Recognitions?
Could Coach Han come to the podium and introduce our state swim champion?
Hello. So I just wanted to thank you guys for taking a minute to celebrate Whitaker. Can I bring him up here?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Wit. So he is a freshman this year and he really just hit the ball rolling this year. He dove in, ready to go. So Whitaker from day one was a leader on this team. Our first big meet was in Columbia where he was on the podium, the only freshman on the podium, I believe. So, and that's a huge meet because swimmers aren't separated by class there. So it's very fast, very competitive, and Whitaker started out the season strong. Into conference season, Whitaker was conference champ in all four of his events. As a freshman, that's huge. You know, he just, he ran away with those titles, which was really fun to watch, and he was a key component in our team earning their eighth time conference championship, which was really fun. And it was fun to watch Whitaker as a freshman rally, be a part of that leadership role and rally all the kiddos on the team toward that. And then finally, state came around and Whitaker just lit up the pool. It was so fun to watch. As a freshman, as you know, he got conference, I mean, state, he was state champion in the 500. When, so second place was a junior, and he shook my hand and he said, "You guys are just pulling out freshmen out of nowhere, aren't you?" I was like, "Yeah, yeah, we are." But he earned it and he worked really hard. And then also in his second individual event, the 100 backstroke, he claimed our Carney High School team record. So, which had been in place, I believe, since 2017. So, long time record, and that was a goal of his. He met all his personal goals this season, and he really helped our team grow and mature in a lot of different ways. So, yeah, a lot of huge accomplishments, and he definitely deserves the recognition. So, thank you.
Doesn't do too much to ya, Whitaker.
(laughter)
Lauren Loom, principal at Hawthorne Elementary, is here to introduce students involved in the Compassion in Action program.
Good evening. I'm super excited to have Compassion in Action here tonight and to introduce to you. Guys, if you want to go ahead and come up and get ready, we have third graders Liam Meyer, McKinley Haas, fourth graders Jason Ray, Reese Gustafson, and Caleb Sutton. We also have tonight some of our teachers who have been working with this group, Mrs. Brennan, Mrs. Dre, Mrs. Renselman, and Mrs. Gustafson. So I'm going to let them take it from here. Who's first?
One, we are a student council called CIA, which is Compassion in Action. The goal is to spread compassion, kindness, and empathy among everyone inside and out of Hawthorne. We did many amazing things together as a group. These are the things we have done so far.
First, we did a welcoming cheer at Hawthorne. We met after school to make posters that said, "We hope you have a great day. Work hard and smile, you are awesome." We came to school early one Monday morning to stand outside to cheer for everyone who came to school that day. We wanted to be sure that everyone we greeted were happy and ready for school on that day. We had so much fun being Hawthorne cheerleaders.
Second, we like to make sure all visitors and new students and staff felt welcome when they first entered the school. For example, when the high school cheerleaders came to our school for the homecoming, we greeted them and gave them a warm tour around our building so that they could feel safe and happy. That was a great experience. We wanted to be sure all new students feel welcome and feel, feel welcome and feel like they are a part of our family. We know how nervous we could feel when going to a brand-new school.
Third, we walked in the homecoming parade. We wanted to represent our school, and that was such a great experience. You could tell that we are very proud of our school and district. Go Carney School District.
Fourth, we have two CIA shout-out bulletin boards in the hallway of our school. Everyone and anyone can write a note to anyone in the building to share how we feel and share how grateful and thankful we are of these people. It is displayed up on the bulletin boards for everyone to see. Okay, I think it's (inaudible). You can just feel the respect and love we have for each other. Last but not least, we adopted a family from Carney Family Foundation so they could have a wonderful Christmas experience. We all bought items for that family, and then we met one day after school to wrap those items. Our parents joined us and we had hot cocoa, a fire going, and some Christmas music was playing in the background. We all felt so good knowing that that family was going to be very happy on Christmas morning.
As you can see, we are having so much fun spreading compassion, kindness, and empathy around our school and outside of our school, too. We have more plans in store for the rest of the year. We are very proud of our CIA council. Thank you for letting us share.
I want to thank you all for this that you all gave to me. It's very nice. And I'm pretty sure that I drove, I left by your school. I'm pretty sure I drove by there one of the days that you had posters out and you were waving to everyone. That looked really cool. Thank you. And for those of you who do not know, this is the time to go. (laughter) Appreciate you all coming to see our students. Consent agenda. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Are there any questions for consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. If there's (inaudible). (inaudible).
I would like to bring your attention to the fund balance report. As we approach mid-year, the core change to show forecast for the budget. Core past is showing a rejected end of year with a fund balance of 20.45%. It's higher than the budget by 10%. This increase is current out of the (inaudible). (inaudible). Early childhood and unknown (inaudible). (inaudible) is higher and expenses are also higher this year. Still (inaudible). After any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. (inaudible). Whoever wants to go first?
So just for those of you that don't remember, I'm Megan Masterson with DLR Group, and Kevin Gresher is here also. We've been working on some of the smaller Carney projects, including the middle school, the early childhood renovation, and the theater, the high school theater. And it is just some other smaller projects. We'll go ahead and get started. The first project we're going to talk about is the middle school. There we go. Okay. So I don't know how many of you are familiar with the layout of the middle school. It's kind of a maze when you get in there. The restrooms we're talking about is what they're calling creaky, creaky hall. Do you know where that is? There's that ramp, the hard, the wood floor. So currently, those restrooms are in pretty bad shape. We're going to renovate those restrooms, expand the footprint of the men's and women's restroom, and then there is two staff restrooms we're going to renovate. Here is a quick floor plan so you can see how we're going to reconfigure the restrooms. We're adding more fixtures in both the men's and women's and creating a nice little alcove for the drinking fountains. Also, the color palettes can represent the school colors, very durable flooring. You can see where the two smaller unisex restrooms are. Those are the staff restrooms. We're replacing fixtures like-for-like, but we're putting new finishes in, upgrading the feel of the restroom. In addition, we're adding one ADA unisex restroom there, taking up a little bit of that existing storage area and putting a restroom in there. With this renovation, we are expanding that classroom adjacent to the restrooms, so it's, it'll be a little bit larger. The early childhood center. So the early childhood center originally had the district office in it. That space has now been vacated since the district office is now in this building. And then the area shaded out in gray is the existing ECC area. The area in white is the part that we're renovating. Just a floor plan showing the different spaces that we're adding in. We're adding four classrooms, two, two regular ECC classrooms, and two, is it low-risk? Low incident, low incident rooms. The multipurpose space that was the boardroom is going to become a new indoor play space for the children. We've created a discovery space similar to what's already in that area. So I've got a couple renderings we can show you. This is what the old boardroom is now going to look like. We're proposing a climbing wall, a track for trikes, kind of give it like a feel of the outdoors. We have what looks like grass, a little area that looks like it could be a lake or a pond. This is looking north, and that is the new discovery area. And so it's very similar to what's existing. We're pulling a lot of the color palette from the existing part of the building. A view looking south. Other area that kids and teachers can gather for, for playtime. So then, at the high school, we are looking at the theater and the band room. You can see, we have a couple elevations there. The band room, we're only addressing acoustics in this space. So we'll be having acoustical panels on the walls. And then at the theater, here's a rendering looking west. So we are replacing the carpet, replacing all of the seating. The walls will get painted and have new acoustical panels on the wall. And as you can see, the colors of the theater are gradation, so they're lighter towards the front of the stage, and they get darker towards the back where the control room is. We are adding an ADA chairlift, and we are replacing all of the performance audio system, the wireless microphones, live streaming and recording. The control systems will be updated. And we are, in the house, upgrading to all LED lights. And then the performance lights will be upgraded to LED also. And we're working on an add alternate for replacing the curtain. So here's a, here's a picture of it looking towards the stage. You can see that we've added some wood paneling on either side of the stage. We're also painting the lower part of the stage black, but leaving that little strip of wood. And that wood, we're going to re-finish so that it matches the wood paneling on either side. And it's hard to see in this rendering, but there are reveals in that wood paneling. And so when you look at the panels, acoustical panels on the side, there's also reveals in those, too. Just touching quickly on the middle school, we are addressing, there are some HVAC, HVAC items that we are addressing. And then at the junior high, we have the foundation that we're getting, we'll get results back, testing results back here shortly, and then I'll let Ben talk about the roof.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Theater, first thing. Are we keeping the same capacity as far as the seats? Are they going in the same as the old ones, or are we losing a little bit?
We are losing a little bit. So this new, the, I'm not sure what size the existing seats are, but there's, the new layout has four different sizes of seats, 19, 21, 22, and 23. So that helps with sightlines so that not everyone is lined up.
I got you.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, timing-wise, Megan has agreed to give me a Christmas present of all of these drawings. So what we'll do with the three projects that you just saw, after the holiday, we'll put it out to bid the month of January, target bringing those bids in for approval in the February board meeting. And that'll give us time to procure the materials. And all of those projects are going to be summer projects. Soon as school gets out, we'll address all of them. And then the roof project, which is probably a later agenda item, we'll talk about it. We took bids and are ready for approval on that to happen over the summer also.
So the, but the theater, you've already got a lot of the bids because you've already ordered some of the parts?
Yeah, so theater equipment is out to bid right now, and we were going to bring it to this meeting, but we walked through with the bidders and we finalized some details with them on equipment, parts, and pieces. So probably going to take bids after Christmas for that and bring that one to January. And then the rest of the parts and pieces, seats and paint and all that will be in the February package. Any questions for me?
I love the pictures. I love the slides. I love being able to see it. The visualization, right, Kevin? Thank you. Thank you guys for getting that to us.
Thank you, Kevin, Megan, and Ben. Parents and teachers have any question?
It's a written report.
It's a written report.
So if there's any questions.
Any questions about it? Strategic plan? So I'm going to, we'll take a moment to just talk about it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approve the 2022 to 2027 strategic plan content as presented, giving administration the flexibility to modify the design and layout.
Second.
All right. Jumping into the presentation. Okay. And so the board's been apprised of our movement through the strategic plan, which really began actually starting back in July when I started. So going to walk through tonight, just briefly touch the process, review of feedback, our updated vision, mission, and values, and then our strategic plan objectives. You know, one of the things we want to be really mindful of is making sure that our process was involving many stakeholders and that we're actively engaging and listening. We believe that creating a theory of action is critical in involving those different voices in the development of the process. We get better by what we do, by listening, and I think the, the overall product is evident by hearing different, different stakeholders. So the listening and learning process actually started with over 400 participants. And so we started probably back in July doing plus delta exercises with the Board of Education, different stakeholder groups like our best committee, our administrative teams. And then we went out and actually listened and met with each individual staffs to do a plus delta exercise, understand from their perspective what's going very well, what are areas for us to grow. And then we went out and we had a community survey, and over 2,000 participants, which was, which was exceptional. Again, a lot of good feedback. And then what was, what was very amazing was that we had over 60 committee members that stayed with us throughout this strategic planning process, and it was time-intensive. We had probably six evening meetings, two, two hours plus, homework in between. And I want to say typically you plan on attrition for a committee like that. And I want to say we had probably 50 participants at the end of the strategic plan. So again, it shows the dedication and commitment of our community to make sure that we have quality public schools. Our strategic planning process, you know, we did a lot of group work as a full committee, but we also had five subcommittees. One that focused on academics and academic support, one that looked at culture, climate, communications and community relations, human resources, operations, budget, and IT. We also leaned on some other professionals. Dr. Jeanette Coward, she was a former superintendent of Park Hill School District, and she acted as our critical friend. So we contracted with her, and we had five champions that worked in the district to kind of lead our initiative strategic planning process. And we would internally take the product of the team and go through a rinse cycle with Jeanette. So she would look at MSIP six standards, other best practices to make sure we had someone that was continuing to push us to, to a good end product. We also worked with Dr. John Ruddy from DESI. Again, he's been instrumental in giving us feedback as we go. So we heard some pretty key feedback, and this is largely coming from our community survey. You know, first and foremost, we heard that safety and security is, is a area of emphasis. We want to make sure our students are being heard. There, again, we heard multiple, in multiple venues through our plus delta as well as our survey, well-qualified teachers and staff. And we heard praise for our staff over and over again. We want to ensure our students are in a caring learning environment, want to make sure that our students are becoming good citizens, are prepared for what comes after a K-12 education or pre-K-12 education. Our district has a long history of high student achievement, and that needs to be maintained, aligning compensation with expectations, and there's been a lot of discussion around that. Our students really perform in the top 25%, but we are mindful that our teachers are not paid in that same respect. We want to make sure our classrooms are fun and engaging and that the district as a whole is transparent and accountable. So the team, the collective team, went through a process where we looked at revising our vision, mission, and values. And I'll give you a minute to read it, and I won't read it to you. Our vision, reaching beyond success to develop individuals of character. And I think the point there is, not only do we want to have successful academic students, but we also want good people. And we anchored that to our values. We want our students to demonstrate integrity, respect, understand, and be equipped for the future. We want our staff to be student-focused, and we want our students to be resilient. So our strategic planning committee really landed on four key pillars. We landed on climate, culture, academic success, and student support, responsive leadership and community engagement, and exemplary and valued employees. And again, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading. So climate and culture was our first area. And really, if you take a look, we heard from our community, safety and security was key and critical, making sure students have a sense of belonging, making sure students are engaged in the school community, and making sure that students feel like their voices are heard. So that's the area of emphasis for climate and culture. Academic success and student support, again, maintaining that high expectation that our students will thrive and achieve in the top 25%. Again, students that will, at least 80% of Carney students will be at or above grade level and participate in immersive, authentic learning experiences. I have to give Jennifer Kopp and Ellie Stewart a lot of credit in really kind of pushing us in this direction. Project-based learning is key and critical at the elementary level and the real-world learning experiences. And again, objective 2.4, making sure that the students are supported with social, emotional learning. Responsive leadership and community engagement, again, making sure that we're focusing on, you know, we went back in the district community survey, making sure that becomes something that we do on an annual basis. And we have touchpoints with our stakeholders throughout so that our patrons feel like they're heard, making sure that we're engaging the community with major changes, making sure that we're transparent and fiscally responsible with our, an established fund balance, and making sure that the Board of Education Superintendent continue to increase our learning and effectiveness and leadership. And the fourth pillar is exemplary and valued employees. And again, we've talked about this previously, making sure that we're focusing on staff compensation. We want to be competitive. We are very fortunate in Carney to have We are very fortunate in Kearney to have a very tenured group of both certified and classified staff that take care of our students, and we want to honor them and also remain competitive. We want to make sure that the work environment is healthy. We want to make sure that we can fill the vacancies needed. And really, that was it. But my final statements are really, it was an amazing process, and it showed just deep commitment from our community to make sure that Kearney's, Kearney School District is a wonderful place for our children for the next three to five years and beyond. Happy to take any questions.
I think that the whole team, the team building for the district as well with all our new staff, I think it was also a good team-building process for you guys as well, if I understand that right.
As an incoming superintendent, I'll be honest with you, I was a little hesitant to start off with strategic planning, but it was a great opportunity to learn staff, community, and engage. It was a wonderful process.
Participation from the community, and I would continue to encourage anyone who does want to share their opinions about what we're doing in our school district to get involved in things like this, because it was great to hear everybody's thoughts, opinions. It made better decisions for objectives and goals by having everybody's opinion, so.
And one of the things we want to do is, you know, while we had a large team build the plan, we also have to review the plan and be accountable to the plan, and we will bring a team back together. So, again, review the status updates of where we are, and we continue to push forward.
Well, and the only thing I would add is being a part of that, you know, process and being a part of one of the groups, that the comments from our community and the engagement from our community was positive, and excited that we were engaging them and participating. And so, I would just tell you that it was an amazing process for me, just because it kind of energized me that our community loves our school and loves our public education system. And so, I just, to me, it was a great takeaway that there's a lot of people that love what we're doing, and that we're headed in the right direction.
Thanks. John, Susan, and I were all part of the group, and other board members had the opportunity for input as well. And Dr. Miller actually took my comment, which was, to take this on as a new superintendent is quite a task. And there was involvement by dozens of folks, dozens of staff, who gave extra time, and we're very fortunate, because I think that while it's an arduous task, it's a tremendous opportunity for a new superintendent and other new staff members, and they've been working for a long time to have the opportunity to really dig in and work together, and really helps us hit the ground running for things that we need to do for the next few years. And the other thing I would say is, strategic plan, sometimes people hear about that and they're like, oh, my gosh, we'll get that written, and we'll put it on the shelf. I really feel strongly that this one is designed to be a living document. It will change. The pillars will remain the same, but the changing environment that we live in, excuse The changing environment that we live in and new information will allow it to be a living document that will be able to really help us move forward in the future. So, thank you. Now, we will vote. All in favor to approve the plan? Opposed? Thank you.
Move to approve the program evaluation for library programs as presented.
Second.
All right, good evening. So, we have used Book Creator to highlight some of the awesome things we're doing in the district, and also kind of showcase some of the many hats we wear when doing our jobs.
Can I interrupt you and ask you to please introduce yourselves to us?
Yes, it's our next slide.
Segue.
Sorry. Yes, so, Kearney librarians, I am Sherri Croll, and I am the librarian at the Kearney High School. Amy Whitner, she couldn't be here tonight, she recently had surgery.
And I'm Audra Pelham, I'm the librarian at the middle school.
Free librarian at Hawthorne.
I'm Sarah Ross, librarian at Dogwood.
Sarah Kimmel, librarian at Kearney Elementary.
And yes, and Christina DeLuca, she is also out right now with illness. So, some of our professional organizations that we belong to, so Missouri Association of School Librarians, we go to a conference every year, which is a great conference, we learn lots of wonderful things to bring back to the district. The Greater Kansas City Association of School Librarians, that's a little smaller group that we're a part of, and most all of us are a part of the Twenty-First Century Learning District Team here in Kearney. And then, the Northland Library Connection, that is a group of librarians started by the Liberty School District, and so, it's even a smaller group that we meet with and share ideas.
Has become a giant part of our jobs, as I'm sure you all are aware. We have really improved communications with our tech department, which is a huge help, because even though they're the ones that put everything out, whenever something goes wrong, we're the ones in the building, and we're the ones that people come to. So that has been really probably one of the best things, we've been meeting at least every semester with tech, so we can find out, because before they would deploy things in the buildings, and we wouldn't even know, a teacher would come and ask, and we'd have no clue that they even had that. So that communication improvement has just been huge for us, so we can help head off problems.
All right, so Chromebook Manager, this would be one of our largest hats that we wear, and that has changed a lot over the last couple of years since we became one-to-one. So, we are the, again, first point of contact for Chromebooks. And at the beginning of the year, we check out Chromebooks to every Kearney student. So, at the high school, it's approximately nine hundred students, and we touch everyone, check them out, we make sure that the students have insurance in one-to-one, and then throughout the year, I probably see at least twenty students a day with some type of Chromebook issue. Most of those issues we can fix without sending on to tech, but when a ticket needs to go in, we also submit that tech through incident, that tech request through Incident IQ. And then, at the end of the year, it's another big process, collecting all of those Chromebooks, making sure they are in proper working order, they are cleaned, that cords are wrapped, all of those things checked in, and then submitting the list of Chromebooks that maybe weren't turned back in. So, it's a very big job for us now, but we enjoy it, we've embraced it.
And we have a whole lot of tech issues to deal with. For a lot of us, that reading promotion is really huge, and that has to be where it starts, and so that is big in all of our schools, and it's great to see it continue. Elementary does a great job with it, with different incentives throughout the year. We have book fairs, and even our summer reading promotions, even at the secondary level, are successful, and that's really great to see the kids doing those things.
Goes back to me. They'll be at the end. So, another hat we wear is research specialist. And so, this starts at the elementary. We worked with Explora, part of EBSCO Host, and they create custom links for us to embed on our library websites, and they are tailored specifically for that level. So, elementary has an elementary-level Explora research database, and they can use those databases at school and at home with a password, because they are paid databases. We also work with Midcontinent with student access passes, and they provide many, many databases for us, and those databases are very expensive, so that's an important resource that we use. And all students are taught in research skills, starting at the elementary all the way up. I just have a couple of examples there, like my academic research, I give that presentation to seniors, because we go into much deeper level than the other one. It's like a little joke, but it's like, what do you mean my paper was all wrong? It's like, because he plagiarized everything off the internet. But I also talk to the students about research skills being life skills. It doesn't have to be academic research, they need to know how to find information and evaluate it, especially in today's world, when you can find anything on the internet, but you have to know how to evaluate that and spot misleading information. So, that's also a big part of our job that we enjoy. Okay, so kind of like what Sherri was talking about, information literacy is a big part of what we do, and the digital citizenship. So, the information literacy is kind of like, what do you do to find information, right? Where do you, what questions do you need to ask, and then where do you need to look? And then, is it good information that you're finding, or do you need to double-check things, make sure it's a good source? Digital citizenship, super important, especially now that all these kids are one-to-one. Are you being responsible online? Are you being safe? Are you being kind? Do you know what you should post and what you shouldn't? These are all important things, and we give those lessons all the way down at the elementary level. And that kind of goes on to that next slide. So, it's kind of beginning research skills, finding that information, and then using your digital tools safely.
So, another hat that we wear is our collaborator hat, and it varies from building to building and elementary to secondary. I'll talk a little bit about what my schedule looks like, and then if the other ladies want to chime in, they can. At Dogwood, with the elimination of the tech teacher position, which was what I did before I was a librarian, we went back into the rotation for specials full-time. So, I have two days where I teach five classes and two days where I teach six classes plus RTI. So, I don't have time to actually go into the classroom, because I'm teaching. So, a lot of the collaboration that I do at Dogwood and Southview is very similar, is to speak with the teachers. What PBL are you doing? What research projects are you doing? What things do you need help with? And I do that in my class time when they're in the library. So, for example, the fifth graders just did an Oregon Trail project, and so, at the end, the teachers wanted them to create a website that they could show their wagon train, and it was kind of like a travel website, invite people to join their wagon train. So, in the library, we spent time teaching how to use Google Sites, how to build a website, and getting that information put together, sharing it with each other, and I went through the teacher's rubric, and we made sure that they were getting all the things that they needed during library time to finish their project. Does anybody else want to talk about their building?
At Kearney Elementary, I only have three class periods that come through for specials, and Gina's similar over at Hawthorne, we kind of split our other specials. So, in the mornings, I have a lot of time available to collaborate, and I run some enrichment groups. So, we've done things like, we've created podcasts with fourth grade and posted them online, and we've done stop-motion animations. So, some of those projects that maybe they're doing in the class, all kind of push it up a level with some tech or some higher-level thinking, just projects, collaborations, and we kind of do things like that.
Yes, similar at Hawthorne also, except I push out a little bit differently during my RTI time, a lot of things through Google Classroom, and try to go into several grade-level projects at a time, or you kind of center on one for two weeks, and I've done some of that too, so just kind of what's needed at the building. Project-based learning's coming out now, and we're trying to incorporate that more. We do research, starting with kindergarten, starts in right away. So, the skills that they were talking about, we do at a younger level. Things have changed a lot since we've been librarians. I started twenty-eight years ago, and it's a lot of similar skills, but it's all very different. But all of these things that we're talking about is what we do.
Of course, the library is not your old-fashioned library with a card catalog anymore. We have, all have Makerspaces that we've all built through budgets that each of our buildings have. I spend a lot of time, we do coding and robotics and things like that at the elementary level, starting with kindergarten, they're coding those little mice all the way up. So, we're preparing, we're really getting them ready for middle school and on up. So, we're teaching them how to use their apps, we're teaching them how to navigate all those kind of things, and to use their creativity at the same time. We've done Book Creator projects, all kinds of things. So, every building, it looks a little bit different, and what you have access to is a little bit different, but we all have Makerspace, and definitely lots of technology being used in the library.
I just wanted to highlight one thing. So, in the pink box on the left, there's a picture of the 3D printer and some cookie cutters. We just finished a really exciting project, the history class, they researched traditions, holiday traditions around the world, and then the foods, the culinary arts students, they worked with them, creating doughs and recipes. And so, the classes came together, and they're sharing information with each other, and then they created cookie cutter files for me, and then they would come to me and talk about it, and I used the 3D printer and printed the cookie cutters for them. And so, now they're going to get together and cut out their cookies and decorate and share with each other what they both learned, and so, it was just a really cool project that I enjoyed.
I was going to talk about the green screen. We have green screens throughout Hawthorne, and starting with kindergarten, I just got done with a holiday wishlist video, and I loved it. During the collaboration time, during their writing and their RTI, the kindergarteners come to me on two students at a time, and I film them, and they help me film, take turns, and then I show them how the video editing software works for a green screen. And that's all been happening, this is only the second year or so that we've been doing that. So, that's an example of the projects, and that incorporates Twenty-First Century skills, because we're working on communication and things like that. I think it might be me next. So, library programs and activities, incorporating all these things we're talking about, not only in our classroom times, but also in our extra things that we do. A lot of us have the book clubs that we do, and the Makerspace times that we already talked about, Book Madness, and other kinds of awards. We've now started our own March Book Madness for elementary. We used to run through one that was through the national website, but now we created our own. We have the Battle of the Books in my school, and that's modeled after a national thing too that we do in the spring. All of our schools do the award programs for reading literature for the Missouri Masle Association, so for Show Me's, Mark Twain's, and then it goes up to Gateways and Truman's too. And then, the students get to vote for those things. So, we do a lot of extra activities above and beyond and after school and so forth.
Okay, so this is kind of a funny ending here. These are just kind of some random things that people come in and ask us in the media center. Things like, my playway's dead, can I get a new battery? Can you recommend a book to order for our library? Can you grab me some mentor texts for inferring? I accidentally shut my friend's hand in my Chromebook. I mean, it kind of runs the gamut, you know? We've got a little bit of everything, the tech side, the book side, I mean, even batteries, right? Or teachers needing help with their own technology. So, we are kind of everything, yeah. All the many hats of the library summed up there, so, thank you. Great district, and we appreciate your support for the library program. So, we do feel that, so thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
If you have questions, I just want to say thanks for being unsung heroes for our whole district, for staff, for kids, for everybody.
You wear a lot of hats, and I think our hats are off to you for the hard work. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Have to remind everybody what we're doing. Approval of the library program evaluation, all in favor? Opposed?
Love to approve agreement with Newkirk Novak for replacement of the roof at Kearney Junior High as presented.
Second.
So, go over the junior high roof restoration. So, the entire roof next summer will be repaired, there's some areas where there's wet insulation, so you go down, take out the insulation, fix any of the bubbles in the current roof membrane, and then it all gets a flood coat on it, which is your new kind of sealant, and then rock on top for UV protection. So... So, we put out the labor piece of the bid. It's a pretty sizable project for a summer project, so it takes a big crew to do because it's a lot of square footage. But we've got a good trade partner onboard, so, any questions for me?
How long's the roof going to last?
I think, I was asking, is it a 20-year warranty?
20, okay. Pleased with the bids, all that? I mean, did I see 13 people inquire?
13 people engaged, not everybody bid it because it was too big for some folks to do. So, we actually, yes, to answer your question, pleased with the bids and really pleased with the low bidder, they do quality work, so, worked with them in the past.
You have worked with them, okay.
Yep.
Good.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item. Purchase from the Garland Company.
To approve the over $50,000 purchase from the Garland Company for the Kearney Junior High roof replacement as presented.
Second.
And so, the second part of that would be to ask for approval of the materials needed for the junior high roof project, and that's through the Garland Company. They have quality products, and we've worked with them in the past. The big part of that is the service and the inspection and the after, after the roof is on, they come back and inspect and take care of any problems to go along with the guarantee of having those products in stock.
Eric, how often do they come back for inspections?
At least annually.
Okay. And they'll schedule that with you, and you'll go through it?
Jason.
Okay, with Jason, okay.
We have to have materials to do the roof, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next, we have some bills that were pulled out for approval.
Move to approve bill for Dan Holloway as presented.
Second.
DJDH.
All in favor?
That was awesome. Move to approve the bill for Cole Printing as presented.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah.
I mean, you need to be second.
She abstained, I was like, yeah, you are, but not yet.
Not yet.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Now you can raise your hand. There you go.
Move to approve bill for Darlene Bailey as presented.
I don't know, second.
Any questions? All opposed? Abstain?
Exciting times, right? I mean, the CSIP was amazing. Just to tell you guys, I mean, that process was reinvigorating, sitting here as a board member. I'm just telling you, like, it makes you really excited to be, we're, just because of the community out. I mean, it started with 60 people, you're right. I mean, it was at least 50 people that last night. I mean, emotionally, you know, it excites you that people are that engaged. And it wasn't just like, yeah, I'm just showing up because someone asked me to be here. It was, I have opinions, I have input, let me help you guys and the community. And I thought that was really outstanding. And the only other thing I want to say is having those kids here tonight, that's a really cool program. You should be very proud of that program and those kids, that was very impressive. And that was something that we could all aspire. Can they come to all of our board meetings and hold those signs? And could they have been here two years ago too? You know, it's just, you know, no. Thank you.
I just want to say, from the time we went through our interviews, like, there was no question in my mind of all the candidates that you were the right one for our district. And when we were in October and doing parent-teacher conferences, I asked a teacher just for feedback of how she felt it was going, and her comments were, her eyes lit up, and she said that this is the first superintendent that I've ever had show up at my school, roll up her sleeves, and jump in and say, where can I help you? And that was amazing, just two months into you being here to have a teacher respond that way. So, you know, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done in such a short amount of time. And I knew when we interviewed you, you could have that level of impact, but I'm impressed it's been that quick, so.
A lot of great team. All right, very good. Important dates. Being here that day, Becky. Ms. Lanes?
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in January, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Roll call, please. Meredith Cole?
Yes.
Brian Hamm?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
John Kirk?
Yes.
Reese Schweitzer? Susan Mormon?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.